We are now live.
Good evening, everyone. This opens the June 9th, 2021, meeting of the Santa Rosa City School Board of Education. And right before we say the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, this is our board's first public land acknowledgement tonight we are doing. And it's important to us as we bring our mission and vision and strategic priorities to active fruition. Our mission states that we recognize and value each student's individuality and our community's cultural wealth. And one of our strategic priorities is to ground our work in deep understanding of students' identities and the historical and cultural contexts in which we all operate. The land that's around us is part of who we are. And it's important to understand longstanding history that has brought us to reside on this land and to seek our place within this history because we are all part of it. Trustee Manieri will do the land acknowledgement for us now.
President Fong. Santa Rosa City Schools acknowledges that the ground beneath our feet is historically the home of indigenous peoples, many of whom who have been forced to leave their lands. We sit on the traditional homelands of the people of Coast to Miwok, Southern Pomo, and Wapo. We honor them and other indigenous caretakers of these lands and waters and remember that indigenous peoples are not a people of the past but are here with us now.
Thank you very much. Please stand and let us say the Pledge of Allegiance together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. I'd like to also add that tonight, I'd like to acknowledge that it is Pride Month, June is Pride Month, and that it is a time for us to recognize our students and our staff and all of those in our community that they are free to express their full humanity. And pride is an offshoot of being able to express our full humanity. And we are grounding this in again, our mission and vision. And so we want to, we take seriously our job to provide a safe and engaging environment for our students and to support their emotional well-being and their mental health. Certainly part of our focus, so Pride Month in June. We have a report of actions taken in closed session. This is item C3. This was moved by his case, OAH, case number 2021-04001. And it was moved by Director Omar Medina and it was seconded by Director Jill McCormick. And it was a 6-0 vote with one absent. There were no items considered in closed session for action in open session. Are there any statements of abstention tonight, board members? Okay, I see no hands up. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? I don't see any hands up, but I don't see everybody on the screen. And Beth Burke, do we have any other adjustments to the agenda that you'd like to ask the public about?
So, public, this is the time when I lower all hands. And we ask, you raise your hand only if there's an item in the F section of the agenda, the consent items that you would like to comment on later in the meeting. If you would like something to be pulled for comment in the F section only, please raise your hand at this time. And President Fong, there are no hands raised.
All right, thank you. It is time now for public comment on non-agenda items and we will allow three minutes for those public comments. And Beth, our moderator, would you please open that up for us?
Sure, if there are members of the public who would like to comment on an item that is not on the agenda tonight, please raise your hands at this time. And our first comment will be Michael Van Der Porton.
Good evening, is the audio good?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good evening. Good evening, Dr. Kitamura and members of the board. I'd like to spend just a couple of minutes to talk about data since that's becoming more and more important for the district, in particular related to the way it was handled for the school naming issues. First of all, we really appreciate the idea that the district and the board is willing to support the schools in handling data and doing surveys. They really could use that help. The two principals spent a great amount of effort pulling together the data and doing those surveys. And I know that they spent many hours working on it. And I know that Catherine Storl spent more than seven hours putting together her survey. That help would have really helped. The results for the two school names and that the community liked the existing names is a very strong, robust answer. But we do need to take a look at the way the data was handled. The surveys were not what they could have been. The Burbank survey did allow people to vote five times for the same school. And that wasn't the idea of a ranked voting system. The Monroe system had a bug. You could vote for a first, second, and a fourth and a fifth choice and skip the third choice, which was again, too bad. It didn't mess things up too badly, but it wasn't what it could have been. We also need to look at waiting. Some of the results you saw were waitings. There were five points for the first place, four points for a second place vote, 3, 2, 1. Well, that has a certain amount of implicit bias in it. It says a second place vote is almost as good as a first place vote. And that may or may not be what the voters intended. And for example, Ed Monroe, the Martin Luther King name rose to the top mostly because students voted for Martin Luther King as their second choice. So again, that was kind of hidden when you have data like that. We also need to take a look at the term ranked choice voting. There are really two elements to that. One is the survey that you've got to get people to give you five, well, up to five votes, but in order, first choice, second choice, so on. And then you also have to work on the way it's reported. Ranked choice voting implies or says you do the vote, you look at people's first place votes, then you throw out the lowest voting candidate or voting candidate, and then you look at all the votes again. You reassign those lost votes and you reassign those votes. Then you throw out the bottom candidate again and you keep doing that until you get someone who's gotten 50%. None of the data you officially received did that analysis. So if you want that analysis, again, helping them out would be good. So please provide the support. Determine what you want to see. Please obtain consistent, complete data and then carefully review those results. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for staying within our time limit. Next is Nick Carey.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'm actually here for Piner, the Piner baseball team's summer program has been hit with some additional expenses this year, which they've never incurred in the past. One of those is asking the team to, I believe, rent the school facilities for bathrooms and to have a janitor on staff, which I think looks out to about $42 an hour for them to be out there. In years past, we always had a porta potty out there and that's been sufficient. The change this year with the increased pricing is definitely going to force a lot of kids, especially at Piner, that they really can't afford to pay much more than what they have in the past to play summer baseball. They're just starting to get back to normalcy in their lives. And this is a little hurdle that's been kind of, kind of came out of nowhere. It seems like, I understand, maybe some things have changed. But I think we could just get back to where we were allowed to have a porta potty out by our fields, which I think most other schools do. I was just at Hillsburg High School yesterday. They had several porta potties at their field. Santa Rosa High had one out at their field. Rancho Guita had one out at their field. This is during the regular season. You know, parents aren't going to walk, where the fields are located in relationship to the restrooms really isn't that, parents are not going to walk over that far, kids aren't going to walk over that far. Most of the time, you might get a handful of people using the porta potties. I just think it's an additional cost that's really unnecessary at this time. And I'd like for that to be looked at and addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment on a non-agenda item is Jessica Lund.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Jessica Lund. I'm also here regarding Piner's baseball program. Principal Desideri has received multiple emails from parents, from board members from Mark West Youth Club Little League, from the coach of the team, asking her to please reconsider her stand on the restrooms. What she is doing is preventing the kids from participating in sports over the summer. A lot of these kids have been in their bedrooms on a video game for months and we really need them to get back out into the public, being in contact with other human beings and being physically active. She's refusing to allow the portable toilet, which really is not equitable considering that all the other programs are allowing it on top of some of the ones that Nick mentioned. We also have three porta potties that are at Monroe for Santa Rosa Little League. West Side Little League is using Elsie Allen, which also has portable toilets. There's been no confirmed cases of COVID coming from a portable toilet. Her reasoning stands behind it. One, it's unsanitary. It gets cleaned regularly when it is out there. Another one of her arguments that she's provided us is that it is a lure for homeless people. Homelessness exists in Sonoma County and Santa Rosa. Having a portable toilet does not create homelessness. And the fact that we've offered to put it behind a locked gate and lock it and put it behind our snack bar where it's not visible from the street is not a reasonable excuse to not allow us to have this. There's been a precedent set at Piner High School by all the previous administration that we have been allowed to have a portable toilet. We buy our own insurance, we pay our field fees. We've done everything that's been asked of us, including maintaining the field. And I really feel that she is not only hurting the kids, she's hurting our boosters, she's hurting our sponsors, she's creating an environment that she's breaking down relationships that we've created over 10 years. And we're really requesting that we be treated equitable. And we're also requesting that we get a response to this situation because her response is that we're not informed. And we are informed and we would just like her to approve having a portable restroom that we are willing to pay for and maintain and lock up so that our kids can have a summer baseball season. Thank you.
Thank you. And President Fong, there are no other hands raised.
Thank you, everyone who weighed in tonight. We're on D1. We have our CSEA report, Chapter 75, from President Alfonso, I hope.
She is on her way over.
Good evening, President Fong, Superintendent Kitamura, school board members. Tonight I will keep my comments short on this portion so that I, and I will speak later on our tentative agreement. Today, we wish farewell to five more employees and who are moving on to further employment. We wish them the best. Congratulating two of our members representing 45 years and seven months of employment with the district who are now going on to their retirement life. We wish them the best. After a recent meeting with the district this last week, we are pleased to say that our new duty supervisors will continue supporting the students of Santa Rosa City Schools as instructional assistants during our summer school program. We're also going to be encouraging them to consider the possibility of a new job this next year. And we will help them move through that process. So I want to thank everyone this evening for a great year. It has been long, it's been hard on all of us. And we look forward to our next school year beginning. Thank you for your time this evening.
President Alfonso, before you take your leave, the tentative agreement is on our consent agenda item and it was not pulled earlier. So I'm going to ask you to speak to it now.
Okay, I'm sorry, I had a hard time. I tried to find in with the district Zoom, but my computer is that, or is that at work and it's not hearing me? So we would like to encourage the school board to approve our tentative agreement this evening. We met and with the district, it was a long process for us. We are extremely happy with the outcome. We all came together for the benefit of the district, the employees, and our students. We've come and worked very hard and we do encourage the school board this evening to vote yes on our agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, President Alfonso.
Thank you, President Fong.
We now have D2, it's the Santa Rosa Teachers Association, SRTA report, hopefully from President Lyon.
I don't believe Mr. Lyon is present this evening.
All right, we're moving on now.
Hold on, is there, is there someone, is Catherine here? How, is there anybody speaking on behalf of SRT? Let me look real quick. I do not see anybody.
Superintendent, it is time for your report.
Thank you.
Oh, that was a good report.
Hi.
Not so fast.
Okay, that was Emmy saying hello to everybody. Good evening, everyone. Just very quickly, I just want to accentuate, thank, have just extreme gratitude for the different celebrations that happened this last week. It was a long time coming that we were able, I don't know about any of you, but seeing people in person was a mind blower. And I'm going to start with the retiree reception. Thank you to President Fong, Director Manietti, Clerk Flores for coming out to see our retirees out back by the practice field, under the oaks by CNS. I think that's going to be the hotspot for the future. So thank you for that. And thank you to our retirees, our 64 retirees, including myself. So the other thing that I got to participate in and a thank you to Joanne from Special Services is the preschool award ceremonies. And I really encourage all of you in the future, if you can attend this ceremony, I'll tell you what, it will definitely give you pause and really cement why we're doing the work we're doing. Absolutely wonderful work with the most precious children. And I cannot wait for Lewis Preschool to open because that is going to be a model for the county, for the state of inclusion of our preschool children coming together and demonstrating how it can work, how it can really work. And then graduations, oh my goodness sakes, and promotions. I got pictures of promotions for sixth grade. You know, graduation, again, I heard from everyone and saw the pictures about how wonderful it was to come together to celebrate such a difficult and challenging year in such a wonderful and beautiful way. And tomorrow we have a celebration with SRTA. So if you can imagine, SRTA and SRCS are coming together to celebrate the TA, the three-year TA. And so we're looking forward to that. And before it gets too long where I'm, you know, this is my second to the last meeting, I want to say goodbye and thank you to some administrators who have served the district for many, many years. And there'll be more next meeting, but I'm going to do a round this meeting. So I'd like to say thank you and farewell to the following. But these people are not going to be out of our sight. But Katie Bar, Katie Bar Principal, Maria Creo High School, Ed Navarro, Principal of Rankin Valley Middle School, Julia Cooper, Principal of Lehman Elementary School, Rebecca Rocha, CCLA Principal, Brett Wilson, Proctor Terrace Principal, Avita Jackson, AP at Montgomery, John McGirt, Vice Principal at Piner, and Elizabeth Evans, Director in Teaching and Learning. Many thanks. Congratulations on the next steps of your lives. We appreciate all that you have done and we thank you. President Fong, turn it back over to you.
Did you say Associate Superintendent Guzman, too?
Not yet, that's next week, our next meeting.
All right. Didn't want to miss her. I just want to say a few words tonight and it has to do with congratulations to everybody and thank you to everyone. This is all of our stakeholders, our students, our families, our community partners, Department of Health, Steve Harrington, plus all of our staff, CSEA and certificated SRTA, and our management, led by Dr. Kitamura for an extraordinary year, actually an extraordinary 16 months. And all I can say is I have huge gratitude for the work that everybody did with passion, with care, with love, always about their students. I got to see quite a few classrooms and got to see all the principals during COVID, some of them more than once, and they just were always, always thinking about their kids, always thinking about their staff and how they can engage kids. And I know that our motto is embrace and empower, engage. I'm not sure that's the order, but really it is about those three words. Those are very important E words, embrace, empower, engage. The resiliency, I think that the entire community has shown now that we're kind of coming in it, out of it in a way. I've been walking around without a mask in a little, some places, so that's good. And again, what I'd like to make sure that we do is we always remember what we learned this year, what we learned about embracing change and what we learned about empowering people and what we learned about engaging our students. And so there's so many different ways that we can engage students and we don't need to depend on seat time and all the different ways. And depending again, going back again to the well of youth truth and finding out from our students what works for them is going to be very key for us. So thank you, thank you everyone. And congratulations to the class of 2021. You have had four years like no other kids, no other youth anywhere here. So congratulations to all of them. Other board reports, other board members? Am I missing somebody to speak up? Okay, so not everybody is on my same thing. I'm guessing it's Director Medina.
No, it's Director Flores.
Okay.
So anyway.
Keep scrolling, keep scrolling.
I know when you're doing that, you know, our screens are not all the same. Director Flores.
Yes, I just want to say, you mentioned a little bit of this, but all the school board members had the opportunity to attend one of the high school graduations. And I just wanted to say thank you to all the graduates, all the school board members that attended, all the directors and classified and principals and students that attended the graduations. And I had the honor to go to Santa Rosa High School and, you know, give and present. And I just want to say thank you to all the graduates and congratulations to all the graduates and thank you to everyone who participated. It was pretty smooth to see another first face-to-face or in-person graduation in a couple of years, so. Thank you.
Okay, did I miss anyone? I understand that President Lyon is now on board with us and I'm inviting him. If he has a report he'd like to make, he can make it now.
Thank you, President Fong. He's on his way over.
Hello. Good evening, President Fong, Dr. Kitamura, members of the board, members of the community. I'm Lyon, representing Santa Rosa Teachers Association. Thanks for letting me come in tardy. I lost my A, but I'm going to work hard to make it up. I wanted to report out, I had a really nice experience this week. I started at summer school, Credit Recovery Cyber High at Elsie Allen High School. And a couple of remarkable things there. One, it's almost entirely veteran teachers, like a super solid, strong group, which I think is remarkable because I think our students need much help as we can get them. And I love it. I think we have 44 teachers and counselors and three administrators who all stepped up on the Monday after the hardest school year ever. There won't be one harder, I'm sure. That was the one, that was the hardest one. And I just was really grateful that everybody who did that stepped up. And also it was remarkable how calm. My feeling about it was it was so calm and so peaceful. And there was so much grace that the administrators were giving, the teachers and the teachers were giving the administrators, knowing how hard we worked, but you just can really feel a dedication to the students. And I thought that was remarkable at the end of a rough year, that we are still that dedicated, that we still, we know our kids still need us. And there's enough people that are willing to put summer off a month or their vacation time to help those kids. And that the adults are all work, it just really feels exactly the way you would want Cyber High Summer School to feel. So I'm grateful for that. I don't have the exact up-to-date numbers, but we have approximately 150 of our members who are retiring or resigning to move on. And on one level, it's, we love them and miss them and it's always hard to say goodbye to the retirees. And there are other people who are moving on into different professions. And at first I was sad about that. And I'm reminded that last year, at this time, we did not have a lot of retirees and resignations. And there were teachers specifically that said, I can't, I can't leave the kids right now, it's too important, I'm going to do one more year. And so both of those, I'm thinking about both of those today and how hard it is to do this job and how hard it is to stop doing this job because it's so important to us. And lastly, I'm going to go ahead and start now instead of two weeks from now, just in case I get impeached before then. Tomorrow, tomorrow we have a celebration with some of the union leaders and some of the district leaders and the school board's invited, and I hope it's a good showing, to celebrate the results of our hard work over this year at the negotiating table. And I've said this before, but it bears repeating, that our agreement is a win-win-win. Like every single person in this organization is going to be better off because we're getting right on salary and we're taking care of the contract. And as much, maybe even more important than the number of the increase is that we've got a three-year deal that's going to give us space to continue working together the way we are on all the other things that we need to work on. And there's plenty. There always is, there's never be a time that we don't have work to do. But it's really going to be a blessing for every single person in this organization, including every one of our students, that that agreement's in place. And so with that, I'm going to, we have, I'll present it tomorrow, but I just want to go ahead and read it. We have a plaque in appreciation for Diane Kitamura. And there's probably 100 other people who deserve a plaque. But she led us through a really tough couple of years. So I'll just read it and then you'll know how we feel about her. With our deepest appreciation, Santa Rosa Teachers Association hereby honors Santa Rosa City School Superintendent Dr. Diane Kitamura, thank you for your courage in action working with the Santa Rosa Teachers Association to make Santa Rosa City Schools a destination. working with the Santa Rosa Teachers Association to make Santa Rosa City Schools a destination district for students and staff." And signed June 2021, and it has our logo on it, and it's blue and gold. And I couldn't figure out a way to show it to you in a way that wouldn't look crappy on a Zoom meeting. But it's, it's with sincerity and pride's not quite the right word, but it's close. I'm just really proud of the way we've been able to work together these last two years and how, how much good it's done for everybody. So Dr. Kitamora, thank you. Every single other person who was involved, which is everybody, there's nobody this doesn't touch. I just thank everybody for, to borrow a phrase from President Fong, you know, we make the path by walking it. It was a tough path, and we've, we've landed as well, I think, as you possibly can at the end of a year like this. And I'm grateful, Dr. Kitamora, and for everybody else. And I hope that those of you, I've just really looked forward to seeing some of you in person tomorrow. And I'll look you right in the eyeballs and say it to your face, so you know I mean it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Lyon. Appreciate that. Very nice. Dr. Kitamora, very nice. Director Medina, do we have a CSBA report, California School Board Association report tonight? We do not. All right. We're moving on to E-items? Oh, my goodness. It's 6:38. It's a discussion. This is a return to in-person learning, summer and fall of 2021. Dr. Kitamora?
Thank you, President Fong. Yes, the team and I are going to talk about the fall. And just to reiterate the fact, I'm going to go down to the bottom, which is kind of my area, that on August 12th, we will be starting in-person instruction a full five days a week. As we can see by what's happening again at the state, there's some wishy-washy that's going on, but it doesn't matter. We're moving forward. And as my team presents where we are with the start of school, I think that it's important to note that at the end, I'll fill in any gaps to assure us of our discussions with SRTA and CSA about, you know, the start of school. It really is going to be business as usual with the learning that we've had this entire year about how we handle not only crisis, but crisis, if the crisis is a pandemic. So with that, I'm just going to start right at the top, and we're going to go through, they promise you they're not going to read this, they're just going to give you the highlights because you can read this of how we are situated for the start of school. So we'll start with Business Services and Deputy Superintendent Rick Edson. Whoop, you're muted. Woo-hoo, you owe me 20 bucks. It's now up to 20 bucks in the last 20 days of my superintendency.
Noted. Thank you. So yeah, we are preparing for the full return to school in August, bringing classrooms back together how they once were a year and a half ago, and still making sure there's spacing allocated, right, just to make sure that, you know, we have separation in classrooms, but with the expectation that full classes will go back in those rooms. Cleaning and sanitation services will continue on as they did throughout this year. We will be going through two major construction projects, want to steal in and plan our high school this summer in preparation to have staff and students come back to new roofing and HVAC systems at those schools. Will also complete marquee project to put one on every campus in our district and finish some other projects that we've been working on that will also culminate this summer, such as the classroom safety door locks. Going into next year, we still have ample supply of personal protective equipment or PPE. If the need arises, or that we're still required to use it in some way, including masks and sanitizer and that type of thing. We'll also, school sites will be able to use their portable wash stations if they choose to do so. We've had several requests from school sites that wish to maybe not use as many, but have some still strategically placed on campus to help with, with that during the school day. This summer, in preparation for next school year, teacher laptops, a refresh of those devices has started in terms of the procurement process with expected arrival in July, and then prepared for teacher use at the beginning of the school year. We're also going through our student technology tools and making sure that there is equipment available and shoring up some of our older devices to make sure that there is still working technology. We fully expect that, you know, this year, as bad as it was, was also good in introducing technology to everyone in the district. And we sure that we are certain that there'll be an increase to use in technology, associated applications and different softwares when students return to school. This summer, we'll also be assessing school sites for classroom technology needs. This is part of original bond language for Major I N L. There's been a lot of work done between technology services and with stakeholder input, internal stakeholder input. And so, Technology Department with Adrian Bika will be walking sites with principals this summer, not for installation this summer, but for making sure what we're looking at needs, needs of sites and specific classrooms. So that will be happening this summer as well. And other than that, I have a whole bunch of departments that are eagerly waiting for next school year to start. You know, CNS doesn't get any time off, it feels like, but you know, they're raring to go and continue providing lunch services for students all through next year, 0 through 18, regardless, are entitled to lunches next year. We will still encourage all parents and all families, guardians, to fill out the meal application form, even though the meal application or the meals, every student is entitled to take that on a daily basis. Those meal applications help us get additional funding for the school district. So even though it's open to everybody, we would still appreciate the application filled out. And with that, I will turn it back over to Dr. Kitamora.
Let's just move right down the line.
Sounds good. Sounds good. So speaking of summer and safety, you know, we are in a summer of transition, although we have MOUs that guide our work. The state, as many of you know, are in the middle of redoing their protocols and conversations about emergency powers. There's some interesting information that came out on Wednesday, but that aren't confirmed from OSHA and the use of masks. So we'll be monitoring that very carefully all through the summer. Apply that to our current MOUs, but we expect, you know, that as Dr. Kitamora said, that we'll be fully operational, fully safe. And to that end, we're going to be bringing some board policy and administrative regulation that kind of lock in a lot of the safety issues that we learned from the pandemic about sanitation, about air, air spacing, those kind of things. We'll be bringing that to the next couple of board meetings. So we will have into policy and administrative regulation, if and when we have something like this again, or perhaps even in the fall, we already kind of know the drill where this can go and how to keep students and staff safe. The other thing that Dr. Kitamora mentioned that we're kind of waiting on is the legislators waiting on some final decisions around virtual learning. We have had a longstanding independent study program that meets the needs of some students, but it's a different version than what the legislators are currently thinking about. We know there will be families that at least in the fall, if not further, want to continue in a virtual learning way. There are some students that really thrived in that way, and that's likely to be an option. So we have to kind of wait for that legislation around it, the funding around it, the way they're going to calculate minutes, the interaction, daily interaction or not, they're going to really require from it. And then we'll pivot to meet that demand, adjust if we have to in summer, or will we come back, make sure we can provide those services to our family and our families and our staff. The other thing that we're getting ready for is our shift to school-based therapists. You may recall that we are discontinuing our partnerships with our, with our contractors, and we are doing our own employee use and a better integration in our MTS system of employees and school-based therapists. And we have made great progress. In fact, since our board report where we had five people of our eight that we're filling, we've added one more. So we think we'll be on track to fill our school-based therapist. And you'll see later in the outcap, that's an important thread to our recovery work that we're doing. We are having an upcoming Lewis, as again, Dr. Kitamora said, some Lewis construction that will be wrapping up. We will be presenting some excerpts from ribbon cutting and hoping to see all board members at a ribbon cutting to kind of open up our process and bring that to our last meeting. We are on track to open up this preschool, our inclusive preschool program in partnership with Head Start, on track to open that in August. And so more when we bring that forward. An addition, we've discussed, we're already beginning our summer school programs, our enhanced summer school programs, both with boys and girls, all the different variety of summer school programs we've presented to the board. But addition to that is our own Santa Rosa City Schools Aftercare Program. We're really enhancing that, and we're enhancing that by increasing the academic rigor to kind of talk about the learning loss that we've, we've experienced and will be experiencing. And so one of the shifts that we'll be looking into the fall is an ACES-like program. ACES are an after-school program that is funded by the state, that's usually for Title I schools. We're going to take that same model and expand it with subsidies and, and application process that'll allow a greater access across all our schools. And then, as I mentioned, an enhanced academic component to that group and the work we do there. I think those are some of our highlights. If we want to move to teaching and learning, Dr. Goodman?
I think we might want to go back up to just human resources really quick. So thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Guzman, and I'll just go ahead and round it out.
Okay, thank you so much. I apologize. You can hear my dog drinking some water. So yes, our sites are currently working on their instructional minutes. And as we talked about, this is also exciting news, it's tied to the tentative agreement. And so there are a couple of choices they can do for last year, go back to their 2019 schedule, incorporate common planning time. And then obviously, we're hoping that they're going to align and move to the new start times, 8 o'clock for elementary, 8:15 for middle, and 8:30 for high school. The middle school minutes reflect the board policy and ed code. And at our next meeting, we'll preview presenting the ends and start times. And also in July, you'll have the instructional minutes to approve prior to the start of the school year. Obviously, from the curriculum instruction, we are very excited that kids are going to be coming back full-time five days a week. That's huge. And so we're also really excited as you see in your informational piece tonight in the board, item around ethnic studies and all the options that are going to be offered next year with full implementation the year out. We are going to need to look at what the grades are coming in here for final semester and really talk about IGP 2.0 and what that might look like. I know that the teaching and learning team will be coming together in August and obviously work together with counselors and teachers to look at that and see what that could look like. It's not obviously just about the math three, but the totality of the grades and where the highest need may be. We do have some math three options, but always it's important to look at some additional options so that kids have choices. I am excited that this next year, more sites have picked up statistical math for sports. And so that's really exciting. Summer programs are growing, and as Mr. Lyons stated, they have started. It looks like we are able to serve around 3,500 students, and that's huge, K-12. And our summer boost programs are gearing up, and we are continually continuously taking on kids. At our next board meeting, I'll probably have some additional members to be able to share with you. It's pretty exciting stuff that's happening. And I'm really grateful, as Mr. Lyon talked about, those teachers that have stepped up and the administrators who are participating to offer these extended learning opportunities to our students. And Anna Tronell, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. G. To round out the conversation, everything that has been addressed previous to my report, and then some takes an amazing team of which we have in our district. And so, you know, starting with summer school, HR has been very busy supporting teaching and learning and our school sites to ensure that they have the staff that they need to support our amazing students. We are also bringing in new people through our substitute system and just new teachers in general to support our summer programs. So we're excited about that. In addition, we have, we continue to positively collaborate with CSA and SRTA. As many know, we came to a tentative agreement with CSA. Tonight, we have the TA along with other supporting documentation on the consent agenda. We recently came to a tentative agreement with SRTA. We, we are preparing to bring forward information to the June 23rd board meeting regarding those agreements. And right now, we continue to support site-based bell schedules and MOU development, which we have a majority of our sites reporting in, having done and come, coming to some agreements around that work. For staffing for 21, 22, we have followed our contractual agreements with SRTA around open positions through the transfer process that concluded in mid-May. We have several openings right now on ed join for vacancies for various positions, fill for the 20, excuse me, 21, 22 school year. And we are also working for some of our administrative vacancies as well. And we really appreciate everyone who's been supporting the interview panel process and input to those processes. And with that, I will hand it back to Dr. Kitamora.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Chanel. So this gives you a snapshot, and I say snapshot with really not giving emphasis to the amount of work that's going on, that continues to go on. As we wrapped up the school year, we began summer school. And please note, there's normally a gap between the end of school and summer school. We closed that gap knowing that we needed to get our kids back into school or keep them in school as quickly as possible. And it's going to be the same at the other end. There'll be multiple programs starting throughout the summer. So please pay attention to parent square, to your school site information, because we want kids to be able to take part, be a part of all the various programs that are happening this summer. And then again, that work into next fall and beginning the school year next fall. Assistant Superintendent talked about the bell schedules as well as Dr. Guzman. Please note, again, this is a lot of work that has gone on to negotiations so that we had complete learning options. So if you remember, I talked about two different phases, being ready to open August 12th, but also the learning options that would happen that were a few meetings ago, that the public, the, everybody who was, who had been talking about opening, that we would have those decided prior to July, prior to my leaving. And so I think we are at 22 of the bell schedules, but they're really the way in which the school's going to operate, start and stop, but also what's in between. Out of our 24 schools, we just have a couple more that we'll be able to report on by the next board meeting. So we will, we have, we will have completed that promise to have the learning options ready to go for families, for staff by next meeting. So again, we are not going anywhere other than a full start August 12th, 2021. With that, President Fong, I turn it back over to the board.
This is time for questions for the board. Director Sheffield?
I'll just be really brief. Thank you guys for the update. Really appreciate it. My first question is around student Chromebooks. I think that was Deputy Superintendent Edson. I know that these Chromebooks take a beating, and I'm just wondering about, you know, refurbishment and costs. I know that these Chromebooks take a beating, and I'm just wondering a- about, you know, refurbishment and costs associated with that and what funds might look like. Um, I'm, we haven't seen the Chromebooks come back and what shape they're in, but um how how do we allocate funds for this?
So right now, we we have enough Chromebooks uh essentially called one-to-one program, plus we have already uh purchased, uh procured and have in warehouse additional Chromebooks. Uh, and what the technology team is starting to do now is to put in place refreshed cycles based on grade level. Uh, so uh in, I don't have it in front of me right now, but it'd be like K through four and then five through eight and nine through twelve uh on routine refresh cycle. And then we would also have to build in uh moving forward, you know, budget for that. We've been fortunate to be able to use some uh one-time monies that got our Chromebook count up, uh especially in the the spring. Uh, and then, you know, throughout the last couple of years, um, there was a a large investment by the district into initial Chromebook purchases and then sites uh either through their site budget uh and or donations have also been increasing that number as well, too. So uh, we were fortunate through that couple of years leading up to uh March of twenty-twenty. Uh, our Chromebook uh inventory uh, you know, we're probably close to fifteen to sixteen thousand onsite, and then we procured additional. And then we'll start looking at that um refresh cycle for for these types of devices.
Yeah, very good. Um, and second question, thank you, um is for Assistant Superintendent Guzman. Um, this has to do with the summer program, and I've heard from some pretty stressed and concerned parents um whose non-graduating kids um who really struggled with their grades this year have been waitlisted for credit recovery. And so I'm wondering, what's the process of determining who gets in, who gets on a waitlist? Um, and then what that waitlist is looking like right now?
Thank you for your question, uh, Director Sheffield. I um seniors get priority, those who um you know, didn't have the opportunity to graduate, and then juniors. I have heard about tenth and ninth graders on waiting lists. I don't have those exact numbers in front of me. I can share them with Dr. Kitamora, who can share them with you. Um, it's one of the reasons why that um we are running the two sessions of credit recovery so that we can get as many kids as we can. Um, and obviously, after this week, there might be possible drops for students who either were surprised that they were graduating or chose to do um some sort of other credit recovery. And so as we go through those numbers this week, obviously, we'll be pulling from the waitlist.
Okay.
And additionally, um, a student could finish up their credit recovery in a few days. And so that opens up spots.
Immediately opens up spots.
Right.
You don't have to wait. Wondering what, I mean, we, you know, we're looking at tenth and ninth graders who who are on these waiting lists mostly, and I'm just wondering, is this, is this a very long list? And I just with the number of students who we know were struggling this year, um, just wondering, is this, I mean, is it something to be concerned about?
You know, I I, that's a good question. I do think we need to be concerned, obviously, anytime um that we have students who are failing, and I think there have been some additional fails this year. You know, r- roughly, we have about two thousand students in- enrolled in um Cyber High Credit Recovery. Um, the expectation is to get them all through. Um, as far as the ninth and tenth graders, I mean, I know that the two administrators who are overseeing Cyber High are looking at those kids who are, as Dr. Kitamora said, finishing up quickly and then pulling kids in. Um, but as we've talked about throughout this entire pandemic, this um summer enrichment program and these opportunities for credit recovery is not something that's just going to happen this summer. It'll also happen next summer. And then I think we're really going to have to look at some board policies around um the number of um credits that we've allowed through credit recovery in the fall. I think that board policy needs to come back to the board because I think things are going to have to look different for next year. I think we need to look at intercessions. I think we need to look at some ideas for um embedded supports within the day, maybe some periods for credit recovery. So all of these things are also being talked about, um, Director Sheffield, and not just something that's just going to be one and done this summer.
Yeah. Is there any chance, and I'm just trying to think of how the schedule and might, what this might look like um for a third session, opening up a third session, we have two.
Um, that's not something that we've had a conversation, but I, it's just due to the timing and also butting up against the beginning of the school year. Um, but I think what I, what I would ask of my team and those running summer school to see sort of where we're at mid, sort of after the first session, to see where we're at with waiting lists and see what we've been able to capture and then have that conversation. And that's information we can bring back, obviously, to Dr. Kitamora and incoming Superintendent Trinell, and um my team can definitely have those conversations and bring that information back to the board.
Okay, and and with that, I I, you know, it's it's sometimes very difficult to get a hold of families, students during the summer, and if there are those who are on a waiting list and 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 maybe, you know, on a waiting list for even a second session of credit recovery. If there's anything that can be done in the messaging that really says we're going to do our best to communicate with you, we really, you know, if we're going to open up a third session, if we're going to reassess this midsummer, um, that 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 we can say, just, you know, be patient and and, you know, yes, you know, we'll be sending you out information, but it's also on you to check in with us.
Yeah.
Where that, you know, e- every opportunity that can be made, every chance that can be made to reach um some of these students, because I don't want to lose them. I don't want, you know, um, a a a a tenth grader, you know, who's who's already, you know, had had a tough year clearly um to to miss out on what could potentially be a a better start um for for their their junior year.
And I very much appreciate that comment, and I, you know, I will, I can, I can verify that there was a big push at the end of the year to communicate with families directly, with counselors, parent squares, family notified multiple ways. However, as we have learned through this entire pandemic, um, sometimes we have to do house visits, sometimes we have to do snail mail, sometimes we have to do things very differently. Um, and last I'll say this, you know, um, we are, um, and again, like President Lyon said, you know, our teachers have really stepped up. Um, but we also can only offer so much based upon how much we can hire. And so, and we've also gone outside of Santa Rosa City Schools and very much appreciate our our partnerships with our other districts and teachers who who stepped in. Um, and so uh we will continue to get as many kids as we can through all of our different summer schools, understanding that credit recovery is hugely important. And again, I'm going to go back to, I think it's time for us to look at some of our board policies so that those types of opportunities is not something that just happens in the summer.
Yeah.
It's going to be, have to be part of, in my humble opinion, before I leave, I will suggest IGP two point oh that that really needs to be something that we can bed in the day.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't see any hands. I'm looking for them. We are going to move now then to public comment on this item. And um, we're going to allow a full three minutes.
Thank you, President Fong. So if there are members of the public that would like to comment on this item, the return to school discussion, item E one, please raise your hands at this time. And Veronica Jordan is the first to comment.
Good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Kitamora. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Veronica Jordan, parent to um now almost first grader and now almost fifth grader, it says our Chavez. Um, first, I just wanted to thank you, Kitamora and your team for uh having this agenda item be on here tonight and for the clarity with which you're talking about the fall. I super appreciate that. And I know many of our parents do. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, I just wanted to make a quick comment on um what it feels like when we're talking about reducing instructional minutes in the context of learning loss. Um, recognizing that so many of our children, um, we know, we don't even yet have yet to understand how much learning loss there's been. And I know that you're aligning things with state minimum standards, but it feels like a time where we should be expanding, not reducing instructional minutes. And so I think we as parents who know a lot less about ed code and um processes than you all do, who are immersed in it, um, just need continued clarity clarity and transparency on reducing numbers of minutes of instruction for our children in the context of knowing that our children have already lost so much. So I just ask that of you in your messages to us as parents. Um, and um that we understand, that you help us to understand as best we can so that we um don't lose faith in the work that you all are doing for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eric Walker.
Hi, it's actually Sheila Walker. I also just wanted to um comment um on the bell schedules uh and the conversation that you just had. First off, I'm not sure what common planning time is. Um, so it would be great if someone could explain that to us as parents on uh what the common planning time is. Is that something like a synchronous time? Um, and also, uh, we're really in an educational and emergency. Um, our kids need more time for learning um to make up for what I know everyone doesn't like to use the words learning loss, but it has occurred. And um, as some of you have mentioned, it is still going to be occurring. Um, so not sure why we are now deciding to change the ed code after our children have missed days, if not weeks, from fires, PG&E outages, and of course, uh, the coronavirus uh emergency. Um, so I just would like more explanation, more transparency. Um, I guess I heard that twenty-two out of twenty-four schools have completed this and that the MOU and its development um has come up with these um, I guess, standards or timelines based off of ed code. Um, but where were the parents? And I'd like to know if any parents were involved. Um, especially at the middle school, when I looked it up, that means we'll be losing thirty hours at middle school, and my child will be an eighth grader. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Keith R. Keith, could you tell me your last name for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Keith Reinhardt. Um, uh, in terms of this, uh, I know that there is a real that there's a real deficiency of teachers in the district. So I'm hoping that I might be able to gain reconsideration and be re-employed as a substitute in the district. But more importantly, I wanted to thank Dr. Kitamora for her leadership and guidance over these last years. I know that um Dr. Kitamora and the superintendent preceding her made a priority of not expelling children and trying to accommodate the needs of uh children with special needs uh without excluding them from the, from the school system, which can lead to very dire consequences. So uh, more importantly, I just want to um to thank Dr. Kitamora and that I hope that the leadership of the district uh will continue uh again with Ms. Brazura, with uh doctor, with Ms. Fong, with um uh Ms. Guzman and and Rick Edson, of course, uh hopefully filling the gaps in the meantime. But uh I know what it's like to take care of an aging parent, Dr. Kitamora. And I'm doing, uh, we, we are actually rebuilding my mother's house after the glass fire, and we hope to be done um by the time school starts. So anyway, um, thank you so much for your service. I appreciate it, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And President Fong, there are no other hands raised.
We are just going to take a second to switch interpreters right now, and then it's going to be open to board discussion. Thank you, President Fong. We're all set. Thank you. Okay, great. Uh, board members, any other comments on return to school for the fall? I see uh Dr. Vice President McCormick.
I like how you always try to provoke me to doctor. It's fun. Um, I just want to say thank you for all the efforts of the team, the teachers, classified cabinet for the steps that you have taken to set us up for success um in the summer and the fall. This is extremely heavy lift. And I know there's a lot of districts, even locally here, that are way behind on the steps that needs to take to do this effectively and safely. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm thrilled we're going back to school. I'm just so excited about it, and so is the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I see no other hands.
President Fong, can, um, President Fong, may I have Assistant Superintendent Chanel speak to common planning time, just because I think it would, since we're here, let's go ahead and and respond to what common planning time is, and I apologize that we use terms, educational terms that that need to be explained, so.
I think we need to find ourselves every time we use an acronym. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. So in collaboration with uh SRTA, we've come up with some understanding of common planning time. Ultimately, it's time for teachers to collaborate together. Um, it's a a time when they are completing their educational activities. It may include, but is not limited to grade level or subject area or small group meetings for collaboration on student work review, collaborative lesson planning, common assessment planning, data analysis, sharing of effective instructional strategies, and sometimes individual teacher curriculum planning or other professional uh tasks. Typically, during this time, unit members are expected to collaborate um with other teachers or staff um or work individually at times to meet student outcomes as determined by our LCAP goals or MVP, the site SIPSAS, or if uh if it's a high school, WASC goals. Um, so that is a collective understanding of common planning time.
President Fong, I believe that um Assistant Superintendent Trinell is going to get fined because she used MVP in WASC.
She also uses SRTA, so that's five dollars times three times, that's fifteen dollars.
Oh. Sorry about that.
She used BIP so too, so she is a lot of acronym.
Oh, twenty bucks. So uh MVP, mission, vision, priorities of the board and the district. WASC, Western Associations of School and Colleges and their accreditation. Um, what was the other one?
The site plan for student achievement. Sorry, single plan for student achievement. Yeah.
So, so there you go. And with that.
Dr. Kitamora, I also heard that folks may not understand, and you may be addressing this in your future um communication or um, Anna, you might be addressing this future communication, why people may not be understanding instructional minutes and particularly at the middle school level. So I will leave that with you.
Yeah.
As you move forward.
Yeah, we can, we can do um some further clarification. It does sound like there's some um things are not clear. Uh, specifically, the instruction minute changed by it for ed code to meet ed code, which is um an obligation that we have. We can't just ignore it. We we do have to meet ed code. Um, it's for the middle school only. It was not for the elementary or the high school. Um, but we'll, we will um clarify that and put something out so people can understand.
All right, thank you. All right, we are moving on to discussion item um P, which is uh our LCAPs. We're going into our LCAPs right now. Um, public hearing for the Santa Rosa City LCAP, and we are going to be hearing for the presentation, and after that, the board will ask questions or quickly discuss, and then we'll move to public hearing.
I'm going to turn this over to Assistant, to Dr. Kit, uh, Dr. Kitamora, no, Dr. Guzman uh to present the LCAPs, and then she will bring forward uh what parts of her team that she would like um to have also part of this. Maybe Assistant Superintendent Mizra, you're a part of this as well.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Kitamora, President Fong, members of the board. Um, tonight, Assistant Superintendent Mizra and I will be talking a little bit about the background of the LCAP, the Learning Continuity Accountability Plan, Local Control and Accountability Plan. I want to make sure that I get my acronyms correct, so I don't get fined. Um, and also talk about sort of what's new and what we're highlighting. Um, so as you know, in two thousand and thirteen, California did adopt a new funding formula, um, the local control funding formula, and we use our LCAP as a way to highlight how we are utilizing the monies that come in. Um, it's exciting this year that we have one LCAP for both elementary and secondary. It's the first time. In the past, we've actually had to write two LCAPs. Um, it is important that we highlight the eight state priorities under the three buckets of conditions of learning, pupil outcomes and engagement. Last year, as we've talked about throughout this whole year, and also um just um in the last few minutes, we have had some trying time. So we didn't actually we have had some trying time. So we didn't actually have to do a formal LCAP last year. And so this provided us an opportunity to take our old goals, which we've had since 2013. I believe Dr. Kitamura was one of the actual authors of those LCAPs and really dig deep into how we wanted to align our goals with the mission and vision priorities of the board. And so that then turned into three different goals, which really sort of are intertwined between Steve's and my departments. And so as we have brought forward to you before, the three goals are San Rosa City School educators will provide student-centered teaching and learning opportunities that lead to equitable outcomes for students' personal and academic success. San Rosa City Schools commits to developing culturally relevant humanizing programs and relationships that help ensure each person is safe, engaged, and supported and challenged. And lastly, San Rosa City Schools values and supports growth-minded professionals and positive learning environments. Before I turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Mizra to talk about some of the highlights of this LCAP, it would be remiss for me to not talk about sort of just the process and the change of just the timelines for us. In past years, we would have started this process in January, really digging deep into some of our data and then begin meeting with our stakeholders, including both of our both SRTA and CSEA. But you know, there's been a few things going on, the return to school plan, pivoting from thinking that we were going to be full-time to hybrid, to then really focusing on returning to school, which was hugely important. Getting our kids back was such a priority for us, but it was a huge lift. These are not excuses, but they're our realities. And without me not getting too emotional, I will say that I have never seen these teams work so hard in everything that was ever asked of them. They stepped up, they sacrificed, and they did. And it also shows in this LCAP. Is it perfect? No, that's why it says draft. There is work to be done. I also think there's work to be done with engaging in person, which is what I hear is what we're going to be able to do with our stakeholders, with our parents, with our, with our SRTA, with our CSEA, with each other. I also think this is an opportunity really for incoming Superintendent Trinell to bring this back to the board on a more regular basis, to really engage you as a board about how we're doing and to evaluate some of the metrics and data. So I say all that because I think it's important to understand that we, this has been written really truly in about six weeks. And it's pretty darn good for such a short turnaround time. But I also say that to say that there are things that we do need to improve upon, and we look forward to your feedback tonight. And with that, I turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Mizra to talk about what are some of the highlights this year.
Thank you, Dr. Guzman. And to start off with noting that the document you see before you, the draft and the public hearing we're showing you, is not the complete work that we're doing. These are primarily LCAP-funded positions. What we expect to bring at our 23rd with our final adoption is all the other dollars that we're also providing supports and for students and staff. So that would be our title dollars, our CSI money, grant money, some of the federal money. So this is just our LCAP funding kind of sources. But when we kind of present this in our final world, where you'll have a full complete of the kind of things that we're doing. But that being said, some of our highlights, you know, is we're going to continue our ongoing work in professional development. You, board, you may recall that we worked with our SRTA partner to have PDA most Wednesdays. And we did a lot of work first to get preparation for our distance learning, support our teachers. And then we began to develop really kind of the ongoing professional development toward common standards. And so we're going to continue those a lot at the school site, but also at some district-wide levels. We're going to deepen our MTSS work, our multi-tiered systems of support. And what that means is we're going to continue to kind of break down into our tier two, tier one levels and understanding what that looks like at the classroom. So we have been talking for months about the connection with students. That's an example of our tier one supports and understanding of that. So we're going to work on there. I'll make a cross-reference later to our expansion to our school-based therapist. That's also going to be a strong support of our deepening MTSS work. We're going to talk about our tier one interventions specifically around the reduction of our special education students and English learners. And what we're kind of developing are trainings, awareness, some standardization, some review of our process to make sure that our data shows us that we will not be over-identifying students in those areas, which is an additional concern that we have to watch. Addressing our learning loss, obviously that is something that's there. The trauma that everyone is going through is going to impact us. We're going to take a little bit of our summer work. We're going to have screeners and information that we'll use with our students that will help guide our work when we start in August. So those would be some examples of what we're doing. As an example, we're supporting our summer programs across all the locations with a school-based therapist and our clinical support. We're going to be developing a culturally conscious, universal screener. We'll probably bring something to the board for approval at our next meeting. And all those kind of pieces coordinate what we know to be impacting our staff and our students as we come back in August. Speaking of culturally responsive and sustaining humanizing work in education, Dr. Curtis Acosta, we're going to continue that work, what we're working on with our ethnic studies curriculum, support for not just the curriculum, but the teachers that are beginning that journey and the work that's going to be happening, the integration that's going to be necessary. So that's an example of how the LCAP is going to be supporting and continuing that work. You know, we expect this to be a transition year. Very explicitly, Dr. Acosta and his partnership group want to create capacity with us. We've done a very good job of doing that, but we're also losing a little of capacity with the retirement of Director Evans and things. So we just, we're going to use this year to really secure our foundation in our crush and making sure that that transition, transition stays strong. We're going to be broadening and deepening our commitment for our visual performing arts. We're going to continue in the music blitz. We're continuing that rollout. We're continuing supporting Atosa to make sure our commitment is there. You know, and I want to recognize in our, again, our work with SRTA, one of our deepening commitments, we came around as recognition of the name of an elementary PE and music elementary teachers, not just prep teachers. And so that's an example of how I think we're beginning to engrain the work and the importance that these teachers provide us. We're going to continue our work on reducing and looking at funding for unduplicated counts. Board, you may know that we formulate out back-to-school sites, a lot of work that they do. So the nuances from our district MVP can also be reflected in their SIPSA single, single and school plan for student achievement. So that's part of our LCAP is returning some of those dollars, so they can take those nuances and supplement our existing district programs. We're talking about systemizing our support for English learners. We're bringing on through our LCAP some EL specialists, maintaining our sole counselors. We're looking at possibly centralizing enrollment. And actually, this may be a time to relook at our home EL master plan. You know, that was written before COVID time. We have to understand and make sure that what we were talking about there to support our English learners is still relevant and pivot if we have to and develop that. So that'll be part of our process that we'll do as we realign with our mission, vision, and priorities. Continuing to work with our differently abled students in the least restrictive environment, you know. So not just with our multi-tiered systems, to make sure we're trying to push our students on the margins into classrooms and inclusive and E through G settings. You know, we're continuing that, but it also has to do with our gated gifted students and developing potentially things like a culturally responsive, universal screener for gifted and talented that doesn't rely on language and make sure we're capturing, you know, those two differently abled students across the spectrum, wherever they may be. We're going to continue our support with restorative practices. We're going to also, you'll see, our LCAP is doing some shifting. That'll come up in the next meeting or two about trying to create sustaining funding for restorative. That is such an important part of our culture. We want to make sure that that kind of retains itself, and we have some strategies around that. And then the last highlight that we're going to be bringing in our LCAP is around deepening parent engagement. As was previously mentioned, we have to make sure our communication strategies are strong to make sure we hit all the areas. We're calling it a tiered communication strategy, whether it's, you know, emails and parent square, phone calls, US mail, and even visits. We've learned that in this pandemic, we created systems, we tracked it, we monitored it, we drilled down very effectively. And we recognize that you just can't have one communication strategy in a multiple tier. And so that's an example of some of the deepening engagements that you'll see in our LCAP. Dr. Guzman, back to you. Ever anything I missed?
No, Assistant Superintendent Mizra, or as I like to call him, Estebi, you did great.
Thank you.
Well, I think you both did an excellent job in presenting very, very concisely this really different LCAP in terms of the new goals. I want to just say a couple of things as I, as I listen to them. Estebi mentioned the, I never call it that, so it's weird.
I know.
Estebi, the, the idea around community, about engagement, that really goes back to our last meeting and the naming and all of that. And so I've actually titled that. I have a transition plan for those of you who are here. Transition plan for the team, for Assistant Superintendent Trinell as I leave. It's, some would call it a succession plan, a transition plan. Anyway, it's a lot of things written down that are in process that need to continue on. But now with Ms. Trinell in the, in the lead. But, but in terms of specifically the community engagement, I'm calling it culturally responsive community and family engagement processes. And specifically coordinator, communications coordinator Beth Burke and I met and talked about and about this, and she, she has come across actual audits, communication audits. And I really think that's going to be the next step so that we can find out specifically what is working. And so I think that should be a part of an LCAP when stakeholder engagement is of the utmost importance. The other thing that I want to do, I want to say is the importance of our partnership with Dr. Acosta. It crosses over so many different areas and, and of our work. And that is one of the reasons why you are going to see, we are going to see greater integration. And it's reflected in the LCAP between teaching and learning, student services or saves, and special services. I think it's hugely important that, that there is more integration rather than these silos or separate departments. And so I think, I don't, I don't think you will be seeing that. And Steve, for the parents, as you say, I know that there's a contract in for PK for parents for, and I, and I think that that's, we're hearing that from our parents now, that they want more, they want to be all they want to be a part of. And so I think that that's extremely important as the LCAP moves forward, that there are definitely mechanisms in addition to DAC, in addition to DLEC. And then in my meeting with Clerk Flores, we talked about, he asked about what if there are changes? What if there are things that the board sees and wants to give feedback to, or, you know, DLEC or DAC? And, and we talked about, and you said it, Dr. Guzman, this, this can come back. It is not set in stone. If there, if the majority of the board or a group of the board feels that there's something that needs to be addressed, they will work with Assistant, with Superintendent Trinell. There, I said it. How does that feel, girl? Hey, it's coming, it's coming, to bring it back and, and have those discussions. So I wanted to be sure that we said that, since Clerk Flores brought that up. And then finally, for me, unless there's other items you want to talk about, Anna, with your team on this, or bring up, if there's anything else.
No, I think they're here really as support. I mean, as, as you look at their fabulous faces, I mean, they too worked so tirelessly to make sure that this was succinct and also integrated and also financially well, Mr. Edson. So that's it for us. The rest is for you and the board.
Okay, so what I want to do is I want to give thanks to Omar Medina and his push for ethnic studies, because it is now interwoven into so much of what we're doing at San Rosa City Schools. I mean, it touches every part, and I want to read to you the SRC, the Ethnic Studies Team closing reflections. I'm just, there's just a few of them, but I think it hits the heart of who we are and where we're going as a district and the environment we have created to transform what we do as a group, as a collective, as a collective for change. So what have you learned about your relationship with ethnic studies? That is the question. And this is staff reflecting on this, and I got permission to, to say this. So I have learned that I am solid and confident with some aspects, but finding ways to extend curriculum to areas I'm not so familiar with will be my challenge. I love ethnic studies, and it is so vital to well-being of our society. We owe it to our children to teach the tenants and to keep reaching for the stars when it comes to education. How can we grow and help each other? I have learned, I have learned that I am worthy and intelligent enough to teach history through an ethnic studies lens and that I have the skill to empower youth through language and art. I will continue to belong. Ethnic studies is not about fixing things for victims, but looking at different experiences more truthfully and becoming more whole and 3D, good, bad, or ugly. I have learned that it is a slow process that is extremely valuable to move in a positive direction in life and school. I have learned that I have a good foundation and already know so many things, but I have so many more things to learn. We'll always have more things to learn in terms of ethnic studies, history, different perspectives. I learned that ethnic studies is essential for making connections with students. Ethnic studies is about justice, empowerment, scaling the mountain to wholeness. Ethnic studies offers the mirrors that my students need to feel connected to their feelings. I have learned as a black man who attended a high school with less than 5% black population, I am committed to my relationship with ethnic studies so that our future BIPOC students don't have to receive the same education, wondering why they aren't represented and being forced to receive an education based around their own culture, heritage, when, they, only when they research it on their own. Ethnic studies is the interconnection of stories, shared experiences, reimagining, breaking down old outdated paradigms. I never knew how powerful ethnic studies was, is, and what it can do to transform the world. It can increase connectedness between all people. I am a citizen of the world and the bell tolls for me. To be frank, that this is one arm of a larger piece called equity pedagogy and that, as I, that is worth pursuing both through the Microsoft cause of ethnic studies, but also so many other ways. See you along the way. And with that, we turn it back to the board.
Board, this is time for questions or discussions, and we're going to keep it short. So let me see those hands or speak up, because you're not on one screen.
Thank you, Dr. Kitamura, for bringing that up and bringing your presidential plan. We had a very robust and very, you know, great conversation. I just want to say thank you for bringing that up here, and I won't ask any questions, so that's my only comment.
I would, I don't see anybody else's hand up. Okay, so I'm just going to say, am I missing anybody?
No, I don't see.
I'm going to highlight these things, VAPA, integration with other courses. Thank you very much. Cannot be siloed. Learning platforms are evolving, the learning platforms, blended learning, different kinds of learning, because we now know how to gauge differently. We have more tools at our disposal. I urge you to continue to pursue that. And I know that Assistant Superintendent Mizra talked about that a little bit in terms of independent study, how it's going to be evolving and changing. That is really great. I really am wanting to empower our folks, all of our folks, our teachers with student voice and feedback, what works for them, and let's just keep listening to them. And I'm really glad to see on Zoom today these people, because this kind of work is done by many, many people, of course, our assistant superintendents. Thank you very much, Dr. Guzman and Mr. Mizra, particularly. So I'm going to say their names out loud, because I don't always get to see you, and I know you've done amazing pieces of work. And we're going, I'm just going to, I'm looking at my screen, Sidney Smith, Patty Turner, Alisa Haley, Kase Anna Mark, Eric Loftie, and Ronnie Boil. Did I miss anybody?
You did. Yeah, Lori, or excuse me, President Fong, there is one person who's actually not present tonight, and that's Karen Williamson. She is a teacher on special assignment in teaching and learning, and she had a huge piece of this LCAP. And so I would be remiss without giving her gratitude and props.
Also, as also. Also, as also Heather Rossi Garcia, um, or Garcia Rossi, I'm not sure, but Heather, uh, Tim Zalnardo, uh, I think, uh, Kelly Dillon. The whole, whole, that, that whole group in those three departments really brought it. They really did bring it. And it's proof that you can all work together. So you're not, uh, Anna Tronell is not going to let you off the hook. I'm going to tell you that.
And Elizabeth Evans, I think, is in that group.
Evans.
All right. So I know that.
Damien, Jesse Damien as well.
Jesse Damien. Okay. So I know that this kind of work doesn't happen without a lot of dedication and passion from all, all, all of you. And, uh, we don't often mention your names, but I know you were working on the presentations for us and we, uh, we appreciate that. The coherency that I'm seeing, just, you know, I've been on the board for five years now. It is, it is night and day in terms of like the coherent, the coherent type of work that we're doing now. Um, including everything that we know we're doing. And I, I think we're on a good path and it's because of the human beings who are in the school district, the human beings that are in the classroom. The human beings that are on campuses, and I'm so proud of this district. So thank you for that LCAP and that's kind of amazing. And I will say that, uh, Dr. Guzman actually taught me how to do my first LCAP. So many, many years ago, when we first, we first came up, it was like a new way to do things, low those many years ago. All right. Thank you so much, everybody. And with that, we are closing the discussion. Oh, it is time for public hearing on, um, this LCAP. So it's the Santa Rosa City Schools LCAP and the public hearing is now open.
If members of the public would like to comment on item E2, the public hearing on the LCAP, please raise your hands. And President Fong, it looks like we have no hands raised.
Because our LCAPs are so scintillating. They are. They are to me. They're very interesting to me. All right. So public hearing is over. It's closed. Thank you so much, team. Really appreciate that. We're moving on to the LCAP public hearing for Cesar Chavez Language Academy.
Hi, Dr. Guzman.
Yes. Hi, thank you, um, Dr. Kitamora, President Fong, members of the board. Hopefully, uh, Adina is able to bring over, uh, Principal Rocha.
Yeah, she's on her way over.
Great. And so I'm actually going to turn it over to her to talk a little bit about her LCAP and some of her highlights.
Hi, everyone. Um, good evening, members of the board and, um, Dr. Kitamora and members of cabinet. I'm proud to say that our LCAP, this is the first time that we're having a, uh, an LCAP of our K8 charter reflecting the merge between Cesar Chavez Language Academy and Cook Middle School. So because of our student population, we have a very generous LCAP, which we're very grateful for. Um, we will be one school next year. Um, but I really want the board to understand that we're really kind of two schools embedded in one. Our LCAP reflects our elementary two-way bilingual immersion.
Presentation?
Program of 470 students that we'll have in the two-way bilingual, um, elementary program. And then our middle school program as of today has 401 students enrolled for next school year. So we are an elementary school and a middle school wrapped up into one. But that's a very unique with the numbers that we have. And our LCAP also reflects our unique strands in our middle school of not just the strands for the two-way immersion program, but also our world house strand for our newcomer students, our world language strand, which is teaching, um, heritage Spanish and Spanish one and two. And then a traditional strand for students who opt not to take a language course. Um, so I worked closely with, um, Dr. Zans, the principal of Lawrence Cook Middle School, Assistant Principal Veronica Vasquez. And we worked with our respective stakeholders, staff and parents. Under, um, the goals that the district has, we, um, came up with our own LCAP goals. Um, as a charter, we do our own LCAP. And so we are following the goals of the, of the district LCAP with a unique, um, twist in terms of what our school has to offer our students. So for our goal one, um, which really is the more academic goal. Um, the highlights of our LCAP is that we are very, very grateful to have four teachers on special assignment. Um, in the elementary, we'll have two reading specialists, one for the lower grades that focuses on Spanish literacy. And one for the upper grades that focuses on making sure that our, uh, English learners are reclassified by the end of sixth grade. We hope to be able to hire a math intervention and instructional support TOSA. Uh, we also have, um, a very generous amount of bilingual instructional aids that help in the areas of Spanish literacy, English language development, and then in the middle school classes, math and science support for those world house students. Also, we have written in extended learning opportunities for students, including after-school tutoring. Um, our goal two, our metric is, uh, the goal of decreasing suspension rates and chronic absenteeism, as reported on the California dashboard. So along with the district goal two is more of that social emotional goal. So since we have so many students and so many that are English language learners, we will have two full-time family engagement facilitator, facilitators. Um, that will also focus on parent involvement and improving our ELL engagement rates. We will have a full-time restorative specialist who will work with the administrative team to help reduce suspensions as well as improve school attendance. We have a goal of hiring a school and climate TOSA teacher on special assignment who will really work with classroom teachers to implement more so in secondary and seventh and eighth grade to implement tier one interventions and provide professional development on student engagement strategies in the classroom. So that students will be successful during their academic day. This would be a temporary position, um, for, uh, at least one year. Um, we have a full-time elementary school counselor who closely monitors the social emotional needs of the primary students and refers them for outside services as needed. And we will continue our contract with Umani that therapy to offer a total of six days per week of a one-on-one individual therapy for students needing more support. That would be a total of five days for middle school students and one day for elementary school students. Um, our goal three, which again goes with the district goal, uh, really focuses on, um, professional development for our teachers. So we have also written into our charter is that we will be an avid school. We will have avid school wide, starting with third through eighth grade. Um, so reflected in our LCAP in goal three is that we will increase the number of, in avid, this is, speaking of acronyms, stands for advancement via individual determination, which is a certification and professional development training that teachers go through in order to, um, make sure that especially our students that would be first generation going to college are taught goals and strategies that will help them achieve that goal by the time they graduate from high school. So our goal is that, um, uh, by the year 2024, 80% of the middle school staff would be trained and 100% of the third through eighth grade, sorry, third through sixth grades teachers would be trained in avid strategies so that we would be able to offer avid school-wide. Um, and then each teacher in our school TK through eighth grade will be provided three days of release time, um, throughout the year, one day per trimester to work with either their department or grade level team in a professional learning community with a specific area of focus or continuous cycle of improvement. Um, also, I forgot to mention in goal two, I believe it was, but I think this is really important. I have in my notes that our LCAP plan also reflects, um, our commitment to including the secondary students of Southwest Santa Rosa that would have, that would have fed to Lawrence Cook Middle School before it became a charter. So we do have, um, funding written into our site LCAP to provide for busing for all of those students so that if they choose to come to our school, transportation will be provided for them. So with that, I turn it back to, over to you to see if there's any questions.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Board, questions? Say no hands. Thank you very much, Principal Rocha. Um, I'm going to open the public hearing for CCLA LCAP right now.
If members of the public would like to comment on item E3, CCLA LCAP, please raise your hands. And Patrick Bailey would like to comment.
Thank you, Rebecca. Um, I don't know what LCAP means, really. It sounds very important. I need to educate myself. You're able to drive budgets, speak LCAP and other acronyms. You tie the shoes of kindergartners. I've seen you put together COVID infrastructure. You'll be missed. Thank you. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. And there are no more hands raised.
Local control and accountability plan. All right. The public hearing is over for CCLA LCAP. Thank you very much, Principal Rocha, also for your years of service um, to our school. Thank you so much. You are going to be missed. All right, we are, it is over. Public hearing is over. We are moving on to, um, item E4. This is a public hearing for Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School, their LCAP.
Yes, Adina is bringing over, uh, Principal Navarro.
He's on his way.
While she's doing that, I do want to point out that we did not say thank you to Edavie Hasyamas um, in teaching and learning for all her help too with the district LCAP. So wanted to make sure I said that. Thank you.
And I neglected to bid a fond farewell to Jesse Damien, who is, um, going to be returning back to, uh, UKYA, so.
Ed, are you there? I can't see your fabulous face.
And while we're waiting for Mr. Novato to come onboard, there he is. I'll wait till after.
All right. Thank you. I was unfamiliar with the transition from you were to panelists. So here I am. I'm here to talk to you about our Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School LCAP and our alignment with Santa Rosa City Schools' goals. Um, so when we, I want to preface this by saying I tried to write a very general LCAP as I am exiting, um, Santa, uh, Santa Rosa City Schools. So I wanted it to be something that an incoming principal would be able to grab hold of and infuse their own, uh, emphasis into what they wanted to bring to our schools. So, um, I followed goal one, uh, really trying to prepare our students for college and career readiness. But how I want to do that is to prepare them for, uh, entrance into middle school and then into high school so that at the, the end product is our college and career readiness. One of the ways that we do that accelerated charter is by really by provo, providing tiered learning activities that kind of incorporate the curriculum with depth and complexity. So I don't know if you, how familiar you are with the icons of depth and complexity, which are kind of the cornerstones of Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School learning. Uh, there are 11 different icons. Um, and what they are, are different approaches for students to really, um, access their education. So some of the ones that I find, uh, really, really, uh, get the kids thinking are to look at patterns. So one of the, one of the icons is patterns. So there, they'll look at the different curriculum that they're working in and then not when a teacher asks them a question, it's not going to be which, which one of these was the first one to win the race, because that, you know, that's a simple answer. So we're really looking at what are the patterns that needed to happen to get the runner to the race? And then once they were in the race, what kinds of patterns do they need to make sure they're doing to get to the finish line? And if their goal is to win, to win that race. Uh, we also look at the rules and structures of different subject areas. So really just the deep diving into what are those rules that people are making it when, you know, in our history, what, what rules did they need to follow? What rules did they break? How did the system fit into the decision-making? So really deep being, diving deep into those things. And then changes over time. How have our decisions, how have our learning really changed over time? And how does that affect the education that, you know, how the education is being presented, how the education is being absorbed? And to really ask kids to be thinking about those things, it's very meta-cognitive. They're thinking about their learning as well as the learning. So it's really, um, just a beautiful way that our school has really incorporated depth and complexity. These are all, uh, formulated by Sandra Kaplan, who is one of the leaders in the gifted and talented learning. And so we, our teachers are very versed in that. So we want to incorporate those. Our goal number two really is to look at our social emotional learning. So as you know, our schools were heavily impacted, uh, starting many years ago with the fires and then now with the pandemic. And we're really looking at how does that affect our kids and their, so first these kids were dealing with, uh, the trauma of fire and then, uh, getting over that. And then now trying to get, get over the trauma of the pandemic. So we want to make sure that we're there to support them. So how are we looking at doing that? We're looking at using our counselor consult to support students through urgent issues uh, as well as providing social emotional learning opportunities. And how are we really going to measure that? We're going to be looking at our youth truth data. We want to increase from a 3.31 to a 4.0 on the question. Students believe that their schools foster a culture of respect and fairness on the youth truth survey. So we really want to make sure that students feel supported and respected as they're, as they're going through their learning at Shacks. Another thing that came up when we were talking to our stakeholders about goal number two is really the lack of ethnic diversity that we have and why that is the case. And so when we were discussing it, we came to the conclusion that one of the reasons we feel that happens is for the lack of, uh, exposure and busing, you know? We have, we have lots of families who are, express an interest in coming to Shacks. But then when they learn that there is no busing to the charter schools, uh, and there really is no provided aftercare at Shacks. You know, it's kind of a turn, it, it makes it impossible for them to attend. So through the way that LMH works, we all know that if we have students in needs who enter the lottery, their, their chances of getting in are very, very good, the way that the draw is pulled. So we know that it, they're, they're not even entering into the lottery as much as we would like them to. So how can we then outreach? So our stakeholder group talked about really, how can we get that information out? How do we get to all, uh, corners of our community to get to, you know, to familiarize everybody with the Shacks, what Shacks has to offer? So it's, we put some, uh, in our goal two was really to look at outreach to see how we can more diversify our student population. And then our goal number three was, uh, aligned with our district goal. And that's really for, um, staff development and, and to continue our learning on our uh, gifted and talented methodology. And that's not to say that it only works with students who have been labeled gifted and talented. We all know that that's not the case. We're just looking at the different methodologies and how do we incorporate that for all students to be able to have a better, deeper, uh, and richer understanding of the curriculum? So we, we send our teachers to, um, many different professional developments provided by CAG, which is the California Association of the, of the gifted, for the gifted. And we also provide them through our LCAP, uh, summer release time so that they can prepare for their incoming students and, uh, develop different units of studies for, you know, as, as our kids cycle through, because we, we are just five, six. So those are kind of a recap of what our three goals are and how we're addressing them at Shacks. And I'd be happy to address any questions the board has for me.
All right, that's our cue. Questions, board? Comments? Clerk Evers?
Um, first of all, thank you for, for doing this. And then, um, and I know this is a draft, uh, Dr. Guzman. So, um, but I was just a little bit confused when you were going, um, you know, goal one, goal two and goal three. It looks like, uh, we don't have the, uh, matrix and baselines and we're missing a lot of the measurement and reporting results. You did mention some of them in here, but I don't see them in the actual LCAPs. So, um, I just noticed that, but it will be nice because I, I think you noticed, uh, you noted that you're using the youth truth survey and goal number two. And it's not listed under goal number two, it's listed under the goal number three. I just want to make sure that, you know, we.
I just want to make sure that, you know, we capture that in the next iteration of this LCAP. Okay.
But I, I do see it in goal two, but I will make sure that it's more clear as I'll go through it again.
Okay, I'm going through and I couldn't see it. Okay. Well, thank you.
Sure thing.
Other questions or comments? I'd like to respond Principal Navarro to what you're talking about, about diversity to enrollment. And you mentioned busing and you mentioned after school care. And those are the lenses that we need to continue to use as a district. And I know you're moving on to another, well, oops, I think Dr. Kedemura, you're going to talk about that later. And so it is our job, board, talking to our board, to continue to help our district personnel to look at the barriers that stop, that stop us, that stop kids, that stop families. But also, you know, how can, what is attractive at Shracks be duplicated elsewhere? So people don't have to bus their children is also another question, another avenue to think about. And I know that everybody is thinking about that and we have some great work ahead of us. So Principal Navarro, thank you so much.
We've done more than talk about it. We have, we have wanted to actually move Shracks to more centralized location in Santa Rosa City Schools. So that's, I think, what the charge of the board will be. You know, why not just go ahead and move it? But our, our goal was before, no, I'm not going to talk about it, but to have a demonstration classroom school so that people could get a better understanding of what happens with Shracks. So I think that's something that you all should take back up and that is move it to a more centralized, centralized location. And then expand out because it should be at every school. That, you know, though the, yeah, the, that whole process of learning should be at every school. So.
And okay, so before I start the public hearing, Dr. Kedemura, did you say, want to say anything else?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right, public hearing. The Shracks LCAP is now open.
Members of the public who would like to comment on the Shracks, the Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School LCAP, please raise your hands. And I see no hands raised.
Public hearing is over. Dr. Kedemura, anything else?
Do the next one, Dr. Guzman?
Yes, it'll be time for the arts charter and.
Principal Navarro, thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you. As Adina is bringing over Principal Vogel, we'll have an opportunity to get some, hear about the arts charter LCAP. Here, she's coming over.
As she's coming over, moderator, would you like to do interpreter switch right now?
Um, yes, please. I want to confirm that we have Spanish speaker, school president. Dan, are you there?
I am, I am here. I'll go on the channel and I'll ask that while you guys are still conducting business and we'll see if I get any hands. But I don't think there are based on the list of attendees currently.
All right, thank you.
Great. Principal Vogel, I turn it over to you to share your highlights and your information about your LCAP. Thank you.
Good evening, President Fong, Superintendent Kedemura, and members of the board. I'm pleased to be here this evening to present our LCAP to you. In this past very challenging year, we have really focused on engagement with our students and are pleased to report that we have maintained 95% attendance as an average in this past year as well as successfully continued our English language development small group instruction, both through virtual platforms and in-person small cohorts in the past year. And 11% of our students have reclassified this school year. We have also focused on our arts integration professional development. That's aligned with our common core state standards as well as speaking directly in how to do engaging lessons with arts integration through the virtual platforms. And all of our art specialty classes continued throughout this very unique school year. And so moving forward, do I, do I have feedback here? Can you hear me? Okay. Okay, good. So moving forward into our next school year, we have our three main goals and our highlights for our LCAP. And our goals align with the district goals. And our first goal is focused on increasing our student access and proficiency to common core state standards through our arts integration techniques as well as our curriculum and all of our grades and subjects. And so one of our highlights that focuses on this goal is to maintain a goal of 100% of our students engaging in our music instruction throughout the school year. In addition to this, we also have a maintenance goal of having 100% of our teachers engaging in student, ongoing student learning rounds on to determine areas of focus for improving student learning outcomes. In this past school year, we've had a pause from our student learning rounds as we're focused on meeting the moment with distance learning and hybrid and return to campus. But we planned to relaunch this moving into next year. And in the 2018-19 school year, we were on track to achieve 100% engagement with all of our staff and student learning rounds. However, with the closures in the spring, we weren't able to have every single staff member participate. So we're looking forward to moving into next year with a fresh start with that five days a week and all students on campus so that all of our teachers and staff are able to engage in ongoing student learning rounds and get into classrooms and see students learning in real time. In addition to that, we have a goal that is focused on increasing our academic achievement in students. And some of the highlights for that goal is we're focusing on increasing our student academic achievement levels in math. Our baseline, which is from the 2018-19 Sback testing is at 42.63% of students met or exceeded standards in math. And we'd like to increase that to 47% of students meeting or exceeding standards in math. In addition to that, we are focused on increasing our overall student academic achievement in English language arts. Our baseline from the 2018-19 Sback data was at 52.9% of students meeting or exceeding standards. And our goal is to increase that to 57% or above students meeting or exceeding standards. And then our third goal is really focused on school climate. And in reviewing our youth truth data, it was, it was really quite fascinating to review the data because we found that our school grew significantly in all areas. And that caused, you know, pause for reflection. How is it that we increased our scores in culture, engagement, relationships, professional development and safety in such a unique year when we're not on campus together? And we would think there would be more isolation and disconnection between people. And our staff worked really hard on focusing on engagement and recognizing that we did not have captive audiences in the classroom, that our students did have a choice to log on or not log on or stay logged on. And so we really worked on making sure that we were bringing joy to our students through our arts integrated lessons and giving our students a reason to want to be part of the school community and want to log on. And so you really see that in our youth truth data from this year. Moving forward, we have a broad goal of improving our school climate even further. And we will be measuring that through our youth truth data for next year. And in the area of engagement, our goal is to increase from a 2.82 to a score of three or higher. And the area of culture, our goal is to increase from a baseline of 2.4 to a score of three or higher. In addition to that, we are focused on continuing to support proactive interventions and supports to our students. So we're focused on our counselor, our full-time counselor, which is funded through our LCAP to provide ongoing social emotional lessons over the course of the school year in the classrooms. And we also will be continuing our universal screener and will be in year four of the universal screener that we do every September. That will help us to identify needs of students early on in the school year so that we can proactively put these interventions and supports into place before students start to have challenges. And so really, our, our, our goal is to continue to focus on making sure that we have positive and proactive interventions and supports into place, thereby mitigating the reactive responses that we have to have when students are having challenges. So that's kind of the overview of our highlights and I would like to turn it back over to the board.
Thank you, Principal Vogel. Questions, comments from our board?
I hate to do this, but um, the universal screener that you're using, is that different from that one that we were looking at, you know, in our last meeting?
Um, so we'll be working to get in alignment with the universal screener that we're moving into district wide, starting next, next school year. But we have been doing this universal screener where the counselor and myself and other members of our student action committee meet with every single classroom teacher at the beginning of the school year and go over the class roster. And teachers are able to discuss any concerns, challenges. And we use our collective knowledge to put together background information so that then we're able to put into place targeted interventions for students to make sure that they have a strong foundation launching off into the school year.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We're going to move to public hearing. Public hearing for the LCAP for Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts is open.
If members of the public would like to comment on the Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts LCAP, please raise your hands. And President Fong, there are no hands raised.
Public hearing is closed. Thank you very much, Principal Vogel.
Thank you.
We're moving to item E6, public hearing for the Santa Rosa French American Charter School LCAP.
Yes, thank you. Principal Anderson is now here with us. And so I turn it over to her.
Thank you, Dr. Guzman, President Fong, Dr. Kedemura, board members and cabinet. It's great to see you all. And Dr. Kedemura, it occurs to me that we first met on those early meetings when the local control funding formula was first coming onboard. And you were so welcoming and, you know, gave me as a stakeholder, a lot of inspiration to be involved in the process. And I thank you for that welcome and for everything we've experienced together ever since.
Thank you.
And I am pleased to just talk a little bit about our LCAP this evening for the Santa Rosa French American Charter School. We focus on building global citizens through the immersion and of the language and culture of French. And that's done through a harmonized curriculum from the French Ministry of Education curriculum and the California Common Standards and Common Core standards. And we find that it's really a rigorous program, but is able to bring students who come to us very often, never having spoken a word of French and sometimes having, not even speaking English. So they speak Russian and Mandarin and Chinese and, or, and Spanish and all kinds of other languages. And they come and they leave, virtually 100% of them leaves bilingual French and, and also speaking English. Most, most of our students reclassify before they leave our school. And in, in looking at the LCAP, really our goals, we followed the guidelines of the, the state LCAP new formula this year. And so they were focus goals, broad goal and maintenance goal. And for our focus goal, we have found over the last couple of years that when we dug into any of our data, whether it's LGL or the CASP testing, that our socially economically disadvantaged students were not meeting the same standards that the rest of our students were. We overall, as a school, do great. A lot of, most of our students meet and exceed state standards. But when we look into our subgroups and then especially when we look into our upper grades, like fifth and sixth grade, we really see that there's a gap. And so we've been worried about that gap and working on that gap. And so our focus goal for this LCAP is to try and get our fifth grade socially emotionally disadvantaged students to, right now, there's the last time, the last testing that was available, which was 2019. There, there was 31% of our fifth grade students were not meeting standards. So we'd like to reduce that down to 25%. And we don't have money for tutoring anymore in our, available in our LCAP. So that's going to have to be done through some, you know, small group work in the classroom and providing other supports in, in school during the day. Our, for our broad goal, we're looking certainly at our school climate as of course that's supportive of both staff and students. And that's what makes our students feel happy about being at school. And in the last youth truth survey, our, for, on the question of, to staff of my school is cooperative and team oriented, we got a score of 3.86 and we feel like we should, should be at a four at least on that question. And over the course of the last year, of course, it's been a very difficult year. And including, it's been almost impossible to provide an immersion. When you talk about immersion, that means spending the day together and being surrounded by the language and culture. I am excited that right now, just with a couple of days of summer school, our little first graders or our littlest kids, when they get in the car at the end of the day, they, they start automatically just talking in French when they're saying goodbye, see you tomorrow. It's all in French. And then they say, oh, sorry, bye, see you tomorrow. It's like, no, that's great because you've been in, you've been in French all day long. That's what you're supposed to be doing and we will see you tomorrow in French. So that's been a great experience already. But socially or emotionally, it's been quite a tough year for sure. And we were quite significantly impacted by the glass fire in addition to the pandemic. And our counselor, who is only with us two days a week, because that's what we can afford in our LCAP, she had 631 contacts during this school year up until May 5th. And a lot of those were pretty rough calls. So we, it was a very important year for her to be there for, with us and for us. But we would love to work on, we're going to really focus on tier one interventions and trying to get things also like the arts charter, being more proactive and trying to find out how we can support these students before they get to a moment of urgent need. So in that, in other words, in that the end of the, by 2024, having our counselor available to provide more social emotional learning opportunities rather than responsive opportunities. And in also, along with the school climate, we saw, it wasn't too surprising to us that in January 2021, less than 20, that we were below the 25th percentile of students feeling content. Our students were pretty sad in January 2021. And so our goal now is to raise that to at least the 50th percentile. Because that's something we really care about is the contentment, which I think conveys, you know, defines by happiness of our students. And we want, want that, them to feel good about themselves. And all of that should be supportive of our maintenance goal, which is that 100% of our sixth grade students pass what's called the DELF, which is the national, the French national exam of French proficiency. And we've been able to do that over the years. We just need to remember to continue to be successful with that because that's just a great measurement of our program and whether or not we're successful. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Principal Anderson. Thank you, Principal Anderson. Board, questions? Comments? I think it's pretty extraordinary, Principal Anderson, that your kids are, your students are leaving uh, fluent in French and English, especially if they started out uh, with a language other than English or French. That is phenomenal.
I agree. Yeah, they, they are amazing.
And let's just be clear about the acronyms again. Uh, SED stands for Social Economically Disadvantaged, everybody. Yes. And that is your focus goal, worthy one. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. No other, no other questions or comments? I'm going to open this up to public hearing for the LCAP for uh, French American Charter School.
If members of the public would like to comment on the French American Charter School LCAP, please raise your hands. There are no hands raised.
Thank you again, Evelyn, Principal Anderson. Au revoir.
Au revoir.
All right, we are moving on to the public hearing for uh, the 2020, 2021 budget.
Yes, so um, Deputy Superintendent Edson, as well as Joel Dantos, will be presenting uh, the budget while uh, Joel is uh, in our coming aboard here. Uh, Joel, in front of the board, I want to thank you and your fiscal services staff for all the work you did on the LCAPs. So I know this is the budget area, but we um, we forgot to mention how um, big a part you played and your fiscal staff played uh, in helping to get the LCAP put together for tonight's meeting. So thank you, Joel, very much. And Deputy Superintendent, you're on.
Oh, thank you. Uh, good evening again, uh, members of the board, Superintendent Kitamura, President Fong. Uh, tonight we are bringing forward the twenty-one, twenty-two budget for public hearing. Uh, I will note that we will have a full presentation at the board meeting on the twenty-third. Regarding the intricacies of our budget tonight, I am simply going to bring up the multi-year projection or MYP. Uh, as we uh, call it. To show a, a couple of numbers on there and to go over a couple of things as we uh, you know, leave this year. Uh, and, and start looking forward to uh, future years with the budget. And just one second. So on this and, and just as a reminder, uh, for those also listening that aren't familiar with school budgets. We present a budget for twenty-one, twenty-two, but we also have to project our out years of twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, our revenue shows our uh, projected or expected revenue with the course of those three years. Uh, we also note in twenty-two uh, twenty-three uh, expenditure of the approximately forty-five million dollars or the receipt of the forty-five million dollars of COVID relief funds, SRS two, SRS three, uh, and some other monies. Uh, we're showing that is being fully extended in twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, leaving us with identified fiscal stabilization measures uh, of approximately twenty-eight point four million dollars. Uh, I point this out tonight uh, because uh, that looks as though we have to cut twenty and twenty-nine million respectively in those two years. Uh, but as we've discussed, uh, an ongoing cut keeps going on. Um, and so if those ongoing, are ongoing cuts, uh, it would result in approximately eight hundred and forty thousand dollars in twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, another important note is the forty-five million dollars of noted expenditures uh, from the pandemic grants uh, has not been totally allocated yet. So that's going to offset some of our costs, which will further reduce our unidentified numbers. Uh, and we'll be bringing information uh, about that back uh, at the next meeting and then throughout the fall. Uh, winter and, and spring uh, as we fully budget and uh, look to extend those dollars. Uh, important to note also, uh, with the proposed budget, uh, we are meeting uh, our state mandated reserve for economic uncertainty. Uh, in these three years, uh, of course, with those cuts as noted in twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, uh, in keeping our unassigned and appropriated at zero or above. Um, it may be of note that fifty dollars is the smallest uh, current year uh, ending fund, unassigned and appropriated in the balance uh, that I've seen in Santa Rosa City Schools. Uh, but of note, you know, what we've been doing as a district through the last couple of years. Um, really to streamline uh, and make more efficient uses of our funds. Uh, this also includes uh, both our CSEA, Santa Rosa Chapter Seventy-Five and our SRTA. Uh, tentative agreements have been budgeted in as well. Uh, so we are trying to encapsulate everything that we can at this point. Uh, I will note that uh, we don't expect major uh, changes to the budget between now and uh, the date of adoption on the twenty-third. Uh, but changes uh, made will be noted in our presentation uh, to the board on that day. Uh, with that, I will hand it back to uh, back to Kitamura and President Fong.
Dr. Kitamura, do you have anything to add?
No, we don't.
Board members, what questions or uh, comments might you have about this budget? Speak up as I can see none of you.
Uh, Director.
Cliff Flores.
Yeah, so I think you explained this before, Ed, but um, could you explain the difference between um, Fund Seventeen, which is the special reserve fund with, and then the reserve for economic uncertainty? Briefly, if you could.
Yeah, Joel, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, so that's a special reserve that we have in another fund and set aside for the only thing it, it's a, for non-capital outlay. So we have a couple of other capital outlet funds. This is a non-capital outlay fund. Does that answer the question? It, it, it's from histor- historically, the reserve had that, that money in it and it predates um, me and, and the current administration, but it has been in, in reserve for some time now. With no other identified uses.
The, the money was originally put in that fund for uh, maintenance items.
And, and why isn't it changing? Uh, why, why is it always the same? Just curious.
Because it has no current revenue source. It's just a reserve that, that rolls over every year.
All right, thanks.
I don't see any other hands up, President Fong.
All right, we will open a public hearing on this budget. Public hearing is open.
And members of the public who would like to comment on the twenty-twenty-one budget, please raise your hands. And Eric Walker would like to comment.
Hi, again, this actually Sheila Walker, S H E I L A. Um, Dr. Kitamura, President Fong and members of the board. As a parent, I'm speaking to you as one of thirty thousand in this district. I want to highlight some of the items that I'm seeing in the budget and pose some questions to your board for consideration. I'll also say that, yes, I did. I wonder if I'm one of the few who printed all one hundred and thirty-something pages. But I'll just highlight some of the things from the first um, pages. So our revenues, as I see it, our revenues are scheduled to decrease by one point nine percent or about three point five million dollars next year. While the expenditures are scheduled to decrease by just zero point eight percent or about one point five million. This is creating a deficit spending environment. And while salaries are increasing by either four point seven percent, up to sixteen point six percent, depending on pay and class or the pay class. The benefits are also increasing by fourteen percent or about five point eight million. That's in twenty-one, twenty-two alone for this upcoming school year. At the same time, books, supplies and operating expenditures are all scheduled to decrease by millions of dollars in twenty-one, twenty-two alone. Total reserves are scheduled to decrease by fifty-four percent or about ten million dollars by the year end of twenty-one, twenty-two, ending at about eight point five million dollars. What is the board's plan to balance the budget in the future, knowing that additional salary and benefit increases are on the horizon? Does the board factor in declining enrollment, which I'm sure it does? But you know, we're having demographic changes in the county and this will likely further cause decreases in state funding. How will the board ensure that facilities, programs and materials for students are maintained in the face of these headwinds? We need to ask tough questions. We need to try and get our parents involved so that we also know where the money is going to come from in the future to fund school improvements and programs that give our kids educational experience that they require to be competitive in a global economy. Reserves are already vastly depleted and facing additional pressures with current assumptions being utilized beyond twenty-one, twenty-two. Now is the time to prepare for these increasing financial pressures. Whether they be from salary and benefits, declining enrollment, aging facilities, or all of these combined. Similar pressures are already being addressed in West County where they are combining schools. Please keep parents apprised of these discussions as they evolve and let us know how we can participate and help.
Thank you. And President Fong, there are no other hands raised.
Thank you for that comment and the public hearing is closed. We're moving now on to our consent items and I need um, a motion for the.
President Fong, um, first of all, I want to thank Mrs. Walker for her in-depth look at the budget. I think in my eight years here, I've never had a parent uh, do that to quite the depth and accuracy. Uh, that you, she said, Ms. Walker, I encourage you to get ahold of uh, Deputy Superintendent Edson. I think you'd make an excellent candidate, an excellent person on our um, budget advisory committee. Uh, we do need parent representation and I think you would be a um, a, a wonderful addition. Um, and finally, I think that you will hear uh, the next meeting on the twenty-third. We, we've been facing a deficit, uh, a structural deficit since I came aboard um, in two thousand and sixteen. In fact, it was really crisis mode at that point. Um, and, and we have reduced that structural deficit by like, I think, twenty-nine million dollars. And we still have work to go. And if you can, if you look at the red um, writing on the MYP, we'll see future unidentified stabilization measures. So uh, the board has identified stabilization me- measures uh, this year for next year. They'll identify more next year for the following year. Um, and so uh, we are acutely aware of all the factors you discussed. And the board is acutely aware of the challenges ahead in terms of um, wanting to maintain program facilities and school sites in light of um, the pressures that are being placed on us by reduced revenues. So uh, I do, I, I just had to say something about that because it was um, really excellent comment. So um, President Fong, I turn it back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Kitamura, for that response. Appreciate that. Consent items two through sixteen are under consideration now. Can I have a motion for those?
I move that we approve items F two through sixteen.
Second.
All right, so that was motion by Vice President McCormick and seconded by Director Sheffield.
Director McCormick.
I.
Director Sheffield.
I.
Director Moneyari.
I.
Director Flores.
I.
Director Medina.
Uh.
President Fong.
I. That was quick. Um, just a really quick shout out to the Red Bud Resource Group. Um, this is a partnership, I believe, Dr. Kitamura, with um, indigenous group who is going to help us with ethnic studies and the missions units in fourth grade. As we consider how we relook at how we teach those, thank you. That has been a pet project of mine. So yes.
No, that's great. That's Anna's team um, uh, reaching out and getting those partnerships. I did go, I did return the item to Dr. Guzman because I wanted to be sure that our local territories, our local uh, indigenous people had also weighed in and are a part of this because um, I hadn't, I hadn't had any contact with Red Bud. And actually, uh, members of each of the different uh, organizations are on uh, the panel and consult with Red Bud. So that was really good. And uh, also since we're on this subject, uh, I'll be bringing a resolution forward uh, next meeting that and puts in perpetu- perpetuity.
Perpetuity, perpetuity.
There you go. Um, the um, acknowledgement of the land territories. So uh, rather than policy, it'll be a resolution. Um, and um, also before we do the next item, I just want to recognize that it is Anna Truenell's birthday. So everybody, wish Anna Truenell.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday, Anna.
Oh my gosh, so many things. Okay, back to you.
Birthday present, we are going to end early tonight. Okay, but watch out for the next one. Sounds like it's going to be another long one. All right, we are moving on to item G one, which is approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting held on May twenty-sixth.
President Fong, uh, Dirk, Clerk Flores has his hand up.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have some edits on the minutes. So um, uh, it needs to reflect that uh, on item E nine, I voted no, not yes, on that item. And on item F nine, in the minute, I voted. Okay, hold on a second. On item E nine, I voted no. And then item F nine, I voted yes. I just want to make sure that the minutes reflect my, the correct votes of the last meeting.
Okay, so let me rephrase. Okay, E nine, you voted no.
Right.
Did Pioneer High School Roofing, I actually call that, yes. And then E what?
And F nine, I voted yes.
Nine.
F nine.
The, that was the nutrition services, I believe.
Okay.
Yes, and I think Clerk, I thank Clerk Flores for bringing that up to me uh, prior to the meeting. And so I have let Adina know.
Okay, all set.
Thank you.
So with those changes, do we have approval of the minutes?
Um, I'd like to move to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting held on May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one with said changes. Second.
Okay, so motion by uh, Director, Vice President McCormick and seconded by Director Sheffield.
Director McCormick.
I.
Director Sheffield.
I.
Director Moneyari.
I.
Director Flores.
I.
Director Medina.
I.
President Fong.
I, thank you. That passes. And do we have any board member uh, request for information tonight? Um, Director Moneyari.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so last night I was listening in to the um, Santa Rosa City Council uh, meeting. And they um, voted on a, on a, on a pilot program that I would really like more information about and see if, if the district would consider joining this pilot program. It's called the uh, I have it here. The City Bus Unlimited Pass Program and Youth Unlimited Access Pilot Program. Um, and it sounds like this is an effort to make public transportation um, affordable and accessible to students um, and to employees of organizations that have more than fifty employ, yeah, no, organizations that have more than fifty employees. Yes. So I would, um, I thought it was really interesting and a really great opportunity. I don't know where they are in funding. Um, if they have the funds already or if they're looking to get funds for this program, but it sounds like a great opportunity for our district.
Yes, we are already on the ball with that. I'm going to have uh, I'm going to have Assistant Superintendent Mazera speak to it.
Thank you. Stephanie, I was waiting to speak to that and you know, our board meet, that was past eleven o'clock. So if you hung in there. Uh, I, I was going to speak in that we have been an active partner in that for the last year and a half. Um, we are going to be a founding. We are going to be a founding member of that. We will expect to have that pass in our schools when we start up. We've been collecting information about the student IDs. We've been giving them routes to create bus routes for CCLA movement and where the, where the parents are. So we've been doing a number of things throughout this entire year. And I apologize, I didn't stay past 11 to make, to be a public commenter on that. But Yuri Coslin, who's the presenter, and I've been doing something really strong. So we'll probably put something together as information for you, just to kind of how it's going to roll out and the starting dates and things like that.
Sure, thank you. That's really great. Thank you for that work.
Anything else, anybody? All right, Dr. Kitamura, anything else for the good of the order tonight?
No, just note there's an ethnic studies update on the, on the information items. And so if you have any questions about those, please feel free to email me individually so I may address them. And again, we wish Anna Trunell a very, very happy birthday. She got to taste some sift, Santa Rosa's finest sift cupcakes, El Coqui for Santa Rosa's wonderful Cuban Puerto Rican food. And we wish her a wonderful night with her family and enjoying her birthday. So, and that's it. So thanks, everybody.
It is officially 8:34. All right, meeting is adjourned. Party, okay, bye.